Regular City. For December thirteenth, twenty twenty one, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. One nation, their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, remember for roll call to please state your location. For the meeting this evening, Councilmember Kennedy.
President, City of South Lyon.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosher.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble.
I'm here and I'm in South Lyon.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtswell.
Present, City of South Lyon.
Thank you, and I am also present at City Hall in the City of South Lyon. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes, November twenty second, twenty twenty one. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
On page three, the motion for the approval for the location of the CBD. The CBBG funds, I had made the motion and Mr. Kennedy had supported that. If he could change the, that I was the motion maker.
I'll do that.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll move the, the minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kibble?
I'll move the bills, a second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Onto the approval of the agenda this evening, I am aware that we do need to make a change to the agenda. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to add to the agenda under new business item number three. And the title of that business item is extending the performance deadline as to one thirty-five East Lake Street.
All support.
Thank you, we have motion by Councilmember Kurtswell, supported by Councilmember Kibble, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Onto the consent agenda this evening, we have consider canceling the December twenty seventh City Council meeting and Motor Fest twenty twenty-two. Councilmember Kurtswell?
Thank you, move the consent agendas presented by the mayor.
A second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye. 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 All opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment, please remember to state your name and address and also be aware of our two-minute time limit. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone up for public comment this evening?
No one's raising their hand right now.
Okay. At this time, we will close public comment. And we will move on to the DDA informational meeting in compliance with PA fifty-seven of twenty eighteen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna share my screen quickly. Can y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so the purpose of this presentation is to comply with PA fifty-seven of two thousand and eighteen, which is the legislation that not only enable DDAs, but kind of offers the guidance for them, this presentation is purely for informational purposes, if there are any questions, kindly ask that you hold them till the end and I'll be happy to answer them. So here we have the DDA boundaries, as you can see on this map, and the South Lyon DDA district was established in two thousand and one. Next is the DDA law, as I mentioned, it's PA fifty-seven of two thousand and eighteen, all DDAs in the state of Michigan are governed by the provisions of this act. This law replaces the original DDA law, which was PA one ninety-seven of nineteen seventy-five. And should anybody wish to find copies online, you can find them at MichiganLegislature.org and you can search for PA fifty-seven of two thousand and eighteen. The composition of the DDA Board of Directors and its staff is listed here, the DDA consists of a nine-member board whose makeup is a mix of downtown residents, business owners, and property owners. The DDA meetings take place the second Thursday of each month at eight AM. Meetings have been held virtually and will be held virtually due to the pandemic, once in-person meetings can resume, they'll take place at City Hall and they end by ten AM. So next, we have the DDA budget. What, the first thing to talk about is how is the DDA funded, so the DDA's primary source of revenue is called tax increment financing. And what tax increment financing is, is that it's a capture of an increase in property tax value over the year, over the base year the DDA was established, so in the case of South Lyon, that was in two thousand and one. And this is due to new investment, building sales and building rehabilitations, for example, and or inflation. So as property values rise in the DDA district over the base year, the DDA captures the increase in value and invest those funds back into the district, so a TIF is not a new tax, it's just the Downtown Development Authority capturing the increase in property values and then putting that back into the downtown. Here's a quick look at the DDA's revenue as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as you can see, the TIF that was collected in, for the last fiscal year is forty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars, we also had delinquent twenty nineteen and twenty twenty taxes come in, in the amount of sixty-three fifty-six for a total TIF capture of fifty-four thousand eight sixty-two, and then there were some also, some other farmers market sponsor fees and vendor fees, as well as patronage grant funds for a total revenue of seventy-five thousand thirty-nine dollars. The DDA expenditures as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as you can see, the grant expenditures line item, which is halfway down on the page, was the largest item that we had expenditures for in the budget at eleven thousand nine ninety-two, the farmer's market was the second highest item that we had expenditures for over the course of our fiscal year. The seasonal improvements, those were things such as the garland that went up in the downtown, the corn stocks that went on the light poles and things, things of that nature. So next is the DDA's budget summary for the fiscal year end June thirtieth, revenues and expenditures you can see on your screen, and for the net of revenues and expenditures is forty thousand six twenty-eight. Next is the South Lyon DDA downtown management philosophy, so what we utilize is the National Main Street Four Point Approach, which is a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And those four points are organization, design, promotions, and economic vitality, and I'll get into each of these and how the DDA kind of utilizes these different points of the Main Street program to improve the downtown. So just a quick, a little bit about the Main Street approach, the one thing that I found data for in two thousand and seventeen, they were able to show that for every one dollar of public money invested in Main Street communities that leveraged over twenty-six, twenty-six dollars of private investment, so it's a massive return on investment. So the first point I'm gonna touch on is organization, and organization involves creating a strong foundation for a sustainable revitalization effort, including cultivating partnerships, community involvement, and resources for the district. The organizations you see on the screen are vital to the success of the DDA, they offer professional networks and opportunities for other down yeah, networks, networking opportunities for other downtown management professionals and avenue to grow, and additionally, to enhance the DDA's organizational capacity, we have applied for and been accepted to the associate level in the Main Street Oakland County program. This is the second of three tiers in the program, it is eventually a goldmine to have us move up to the select level of the Main Street program. And I've spoken with members of the county's Main Street team, and they'll be making a visit to South Lyon, I believe in early January, to perform an assessment to kind of finalize us moving up in the program. So the next point is design, and design supports the community's transformation by enhancing the physical and visual assets that set the commercial district apart. So one of the biggest things that we had happen this year was the mural, as you can see here, and its different phases of completion. So we established a mural incentive program that seeks to incentivize downtown property owners to have a mural installed on the side of their building by offsetting some of the costs of the mural. The mural that was done on the Grand Shrunkh Home received funds from the DDA, and further, the Cultural Arts Commission also provided funding for this project. And between the DDA and cultural arts funding, there was a fifty percent match for the cost of the mural. Additionally, we are successful in receiving fifteen hundred dollars in grant funds to go towards this mural program. So this is one of the big, you know, kind of transformational things for our downtown. And you know, because of this mural, I've had probably three or four different property owners reach out to me and say, hey, I want to do a mural next year, so we're gonna continue to work on hopefully getting some more high-quality public art up in our downtown. So another kind of cool thing that the design was able to do, the, the DDA's design committee kind of tackled this pocket park between Bob's Barber Shop and the Twelve Kitchen Elves, you can see the before and after photos here, but their first project was to revamp this pocket park and make it, you know, more of a welcoming place for people to come and sit if they're either having a coffee, waiting to get their haircut, or if they just want to have a nice place to come and, come and sit downtown. The project was done for, I think, a total of five hundred dollars, so it was, you know, a great project, had a great impact on the downtown and people are frequenting this park more often. The third point of the Main Street program is economic vitality, and economic vitality focuses on capital incentives and other economic and financial tools to assist new and existing businesses, catalyze property development, and create a supportive environment for entrepreneurs and innovators that drive local economies. So there was a number of new businesses that opened downtown this year, many of which can be seen on your screen. The RCA building, as you can see in the bottom right, is not open yet, however, they have plans to open in twenty twenty-two, but I wanted to include, include them on there because it's a huge project and they've been doing a lot of work, so we're very excited to have these new businesses open in downtown. And, you know, it's just great to see that people want to invest in downtown South Lyon. And finally, the fourth point of the Main Street approach is promotion, which positions the downtown as the center of the community and hub of economic activity, while creating a positive image, image that showcases the community's unique characteristics. So the biggest thing for us and communities across the state was that twenty twenty-one saw the return of many South Lyon events after a hiatus in twenty twenty. With great attendance numbers for each of these events, it was clear the community showed its support of our downtown events that took place over the year. The DDA continues to assess how to improve the quality of events offered downtown and, you know, try continually trying to make things better, so as you can see from all the different flyers that I've posted here, we had the, both ladies nights were back, we tried out a food truck rally, the Lake Street Cruisin', those were back, Pumpkin Fest was back, Cool Yule got a new name, the Holiday Spectacular, and we had the downtown trick or treat. Additionally, there's a few more pictures from events from the past year, and I also included the farmer's market in the promotions piece as well. The farmer's market this year was very successful despite some, some big changes. A longtime farmer's market manager, Tim Davis, is no longer with the market, however, due to his hard work at the beginning of the season, the market saw an increase in sponsorship dollars and experienced wait lists for vendors to attend the market during the peak of the season. There are special events and programming throughout the season as well to attract new customers, so we had Halloween at the farmer's market, we had a roll to the market day, we had dog training down there, and you know, it was a great season for the farmer's market, and we're hoping, you know, to continue to grow the market in the future. So with that, that's the end of my presentation, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Nate, I was just kind of curious, when I'm looking through the list of expenditures, could you give me an example of what would be described as a miscellaneous expense?
Yep, so that would be for something, you know, for doing an event or something like that, and I need to go and, and purchase like zip ties or, you know, different tools or something like that. I try to keep those to a minimum, just so that we, you know, we're not having a bunch of miscellaneous expenses, which really isn't accounted for, so.
I, I, I think that's terrific, and certainly that kind of activity has to take, take place, you're not going to necessarily have everything at hand. It was just that that's a little bit over fourteen percent of that budget, so I was, I was kind of curious if there was some big big cost items, or if it was just a whole lot of small things that were necessary to, to pull things off.
I can't remember off the top, sorry, I'm trying to go back to the slide. The, I believe, I can't recall exactly, but I believe there was something that had to go under the miscellaneous expense category from the previous fiscal year. And so I, I can't remember, but I can get back to you on what that was.
I, I was actually just sort of interested in what would fall into that category, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilmember Hanson, and then I'm coming to you, Councilmember Kurtswell.
Nate, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing to really bring events in our community and, and drive the business downtown. I was curious, what sort of efforts is the DDA putting forth to engage the local businesses so that they're knowledgeable and aware of upcoming events that are happening, especially in twenty twenty-two? And what do you think would be most beneficial that council could help with so that you have the resources so that the businesses downtown are aware of upcoming events and can engage and, and be involved in those events?
Okay, yeah, so some of the, the efforts that we, we engage in are obviously posting on our Facebook page that has the greatest number of followers, but I also have an email list of different business owners in the downtown and before events, I like to send out the time of the event, if there's any road closures, you know, what those road closures will be, and, and just trying to make sure that we're reaching each business owner that we can and providing that information to them, if there's, you know, something that was approved by the council, include, include that language in there as well. I, I'm sorry, I can't remember the second part of your question.
Oh, just what efforts do you feel that council could help with as far as making sure that businesses are involved and engaged in these upcoming events, so they could be involved in maybe future events, you know, going forward?
Yeah, you know, I think council does a great job already of, of coming to the event, showing their support for the events. And I think, you know, doing that, it, it really helps a lot, I think our business owners like to see city council members at the events, it kind of shows, you know, that they're, they're interested and want to partake, so just your support is great, the rest, you know, that's, that's up to me to, to make it happen, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask a question regarding the DDA's revenues as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And I was looking at the real property tax levy and then looked at the taxes collected. And then I went down and looked at delinquent two nineteen to two twenty taxes collected. It, it, let's talk a little bit about delinquent taxes. To me, that seems like a lot. Six thousand, and that's from two thousand nineteen to two twenty. Do we have any idea what the number of delinquent taxes are for twenty twenty-one?
I do not yet, maybe Lisa or Patricia would be able to answer that better than me, but I, I don't know as of right now.
Free Clerk Deaton, go ahead.
I can look into, look into the information and let you know, Maggie, I don't know that right off the top of my head. I know we're pretty much collective for summer taxes, I don't think we have a lot of outstanding delinquent, but I would have to look at the reports.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I just had, this is just kind of a suggestion or just something that I would just love to see the DDA Board talk about for future events. Things like, you know, after the parade at the, at the Holiday Spectacular was really great, there was a lot of energy down there, a lot of people, and just maybe if we could come up with, you know, the DDA Board or whoever is planning these events, could come up with a way to capitalize on all those people being there and maybe just finding ways to keep people there a little bit longer after the parade's over or after a big event, just because everyone kind of dissipated after that. And I know a lot of the shops were still open, and I just think it'd be something that, just in planning, that maybe could be talked about a little bit, just capitalizing a little bit more on that, it's kind of a suggestion. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Anyone else have anything for Nate on this? All right, thanks Nate, are we gonna go right into the discussion of downtown now, or?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, let me change over quick. Okay, so the first thing I'd like to talk about is the holiday, the Holiday Spectacular, that happened Saturday, December fourth. Overall, the event went very well, there were a few last-minute changes that we had to make due to the schools being closed Friday to Monday, December sixth. But with that being said, we were able to kind of come up with a backup plan and, and, you know, have everything run pretty smoothly. You know, people are aware of the events that happened during the day, but you know, from being downtown, from, you know, nine until the end of the parade, there were people, you know, constantly walking back and forth downtown, a lot of the shop owners that I spoke with during the event said that they had a very busy day, there's people coming in all day long, so with that being said, taking into consideration with what Councilmember Dill just mentioned, trying to get people to stay downtown once the parade has ended is something that we're gonna be looking at. We have a wrap-up meeting on Friday of this week to kind of go over what we thought well, what we thought went well and how, and what we can improve on for next year. But I, I do need to recognize a core group of volunteers that committed many hours of their time to help successfully execute the Holiday Spectacular, and it wouldn't have been possible without their help, so first is Melissa Boardman, next is Tanya Nevett, Linda Ross, Larry Ledbetter, Annie Vimo, and Ron Boardman, all, all of those people were instrumental, and I also forgot to mention Dana Johnston who put on the parade, so all those people, we met weekly for about two or three months and very thankful for their, for their volunteer. Next, the Director of the South Line Rec Authority has submitted a resignation for their position, so this has an effect on the farmer's market partnership that we are to enter with SLARA. Therefore, we're not gonna be entering into that contract, and I posted the farmer's market manager position last week on ZipRecruiter, it'll be up until January eighth, and we'll hire the market manager in the same capacity as the previous market manager. The DDA Board met Thursday, December ninth of last week, during the, the meeting, the Board discussed the farmer's market, as well as participating in a focus group at the South Lyon Community Schools on January twenty-seventh. Let's see here, and then finally, as I mentioned in my presentation, Main Street Oakland County will be sending an assessment team in January for us to move up in the program, and with that, I am all done.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I, I'm curious, what is the how, how will the, the county end up doing an assessment, and do you know what the the, I guess the benchmarks that they're looking for will be to, to try to give us some assistance?
Yeah, so what it's gonna be get around is getting the South Lyon DDA in a position to move up to the select level of the program. They're not gonna be telling us what we need to do with the downtown, because, I mean, you know, the South Lyon community is most familiar with the downtown, but they're gonna talk to us and say, hey, you know, this is what you need to move up to the select level of the county's Main Street program. So I'll be sending the TIF plan, reporting from the last three years, work plans that we have for different events, and that can kind of help build that organizational capacity so that we can move up in the program.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Nate, what's going on with the doctor's office?
So they are still working on it. You know, things I think at this point in time are just, just taking longer with supply chain issues and, and whatever, but so the doctor's office is still, still happening, I, I don't believe they have a tenant for the retail space yet, but that's something that I'm gonna be looking at and trying to help them find somebody to, to go in there, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Nate, so rumor has it, the La Marca opened, is that accurate?
I believe so, I think they may have opened today, I didn't get out there to go and see if they were open, but I can go check tomorrow and, and get back to you on that.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Actually, I think they were open over the weekend, because I was up there, and the place was packed, not La Marca Cancun was, but there were people going in and out of La Marca, so, and that's a very successful chain, well, it's a very successful restaurant over in Brighton, and I think we're fortunate to be able to get a La Marca here in South Lyon, they do, they do a good job, so.
Anyone else have anything for Nate and downtown discussion tonight? All right, thanks Nate, great job.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Fire Chief report, I believe I saw Deputy Chief Weir here. There you are, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, just a few things for you this evening. Last week, we completed the graphics for the new F-150 that we took delivery on a little earlier in this year, so that is now in service, and it's scheduled to get lights and sirens installed, but there's a backorder probably sitting on a boat somewhere. So they, they said it backdated about four weeks, so we anticipate that going for licensed sirens probably early January, but it is in service right now and, and is being used by the crews for personnel transport. The vehicle that is replacing the Jeep is going to be having the licensed sirens removed, and then we'll be posting that up for sale probably on Mitten in the next month or two. Next, we had a busy weekend with the wind and weather over the weekend. We had two homes damaged by fallen trees, along with a number of downed power lines. So kudos to DTE, I know they've been out working extremely hard getting everybody's power restored. I would like to remind all the citizens to go out to the hardware store and grab a carbon monoxide detector. We're getting into the season where we're responding to a significant amount of those. And those carbon monoxide detectors, you know, you can pick one up at any local hardware store for, for relatively cheap, and they can save your life just as much as a smoke detector can. And lastly, I would like to thank the city for involving us in the Holiday Spectacular Parade. The Fire Department had the privilege of delivering Santa to McCavity Park once again this year, and I know the firefighters really love being involved in that event, so that's all I have, if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer those.
Anyone have anything for Deputy Chief Weir tonight? All right, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Move on to the Police Chief report, and Chief Sobek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've got a number of things for you, it seems like it's been a while since I've been before you, so I got a lot, but I'll try and make it quick. Our Officer of the Year for two thousand twenty-one was Detective Tim Rapp, twenty-two-year veteran, this is his first time through the Detective Bureau, we have a rotation of a year, did an outstanding job for us, just his work ethic is, is impeccable, and he's just a consummate team player, so we had three officers that were nominated, and the awards committee unanimously decided it was gonna be Tim Rapp, so congratulations to Tim. Our generator project, Consumers was out on December eighth, changed that fitting from a half-inch line to an inch and a half. That went well, the SPS contractors were out December ninth and finished up the job, very clean, very neat, they were in and out, so everything is already, everything's trenched, the platform's in, we are just waiting for the arrival of a generator, then we should be good to go, so that's exciting. I had a department meeting slash Christmas party December sixth, we talked about some things like Officer of the Year. We did a review of twenty twenty-one, some goods, some not-so-good, some things we can improve on, and we talked about some budget, upcoming budget requests for the twenty-two, twenty-three, so that's always a good, a good time of the year. Last year, after, last week after the schools, I met and went to all of the school administrators in their schools individually, just to kind of reassure him, reassure all of them of our commitment, that's the safety is our priority here, and so the things that we were doing before, we're gonna continue being there on arrival and dismissal times, doing our walkthroughs. After that, we had, we had some guy, we had one of our officers assigned to the school both Monday and Tuesday before we kind of got together with the schools to make an agreement to have one of our officers in the school resource as a school resource officer, but I'll tell you a bit more about that, but just meeting with them, they just felt good, they felt confident, they were thankful that we were still there doing our things, and they appreciated seeing me there, so. Uh, our first responder monument found that we received another five hundred dollar donation today. Uh, that brings us up to about forty-six hundred dollars, so we're excited about that, you know, closer to our goal. Uh, the Wigs for Kids program, we raised about almost sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, I know, thank you, some of the city council members for their their donations, uh, the checks and the electronic donations. Uh, we had an opportunity to partner with Big B Coffee on December eleventh from twelve to four. Um, they provided us a dollar with every drink that we sold during that time and uh, donations and some tips. Um, so we raised six hundred dollars in about four hours and uh, that place gets really busy. I was responsible to work the drive-through and uh, it was crazy. I had a whole new appreciation for what they do and just how quickly they can do it. So uh, that was really cool working with them. So to Maya and Ashley and the crew, we thank you for partnering with us. It was a good time. Uh, I received uh, two checks from MMRMA. Uh, some of our grants received a seventy uh, seven thousand three hundred and five dollar grant for uh, half of the in-house cameras. Uh, so that was nice to get and thirty-five hundred dollar reimbursement sum up for our tasers that we purchased, so. Uh, I'm expecting another one very soon after our sergeant um, graduates from his supervisor class. We're looking forward to another eight hundred dollars from that, so good to see. Um, so needless to say, we had a pretty stressful week last week. Um, don't usually come to you and explain how busy or how stressful, how crazy it was, but last week because of everything going on. Obviously, with the the Oxford incident and how close to home it was, I think it really affected us a lot more than what we really wanted to let on that we believed. So we had some good discussions. We talked about it. Um, you know, we had the lean out going on this week. Uh, we have accreditation requirements that are coming down to the wire for this for this month. Lieutenant Baki's father passed away. Um, so just a lot of going on and we just, we had, we took the time to really discuss like, this is really like, we really haven't felt that much stress or pressure as a team, as a police department. I I can't even remember when we really discussed that, so. Uh, knowing that, we had some good discussions and I basically let them know and reminded them that we do have assistance from our employee assistance program. Uh, should they need to talk to somebody or we are a department psychologist, they can have a session with them and just discuss things and don't really know what people were dealing with before the accident, the the Oxford incident, but uh, that just kind of piled everything on, so. I have a saying, I like to take care of the people that take care of the people. That means the officers that go there and take care of our citizens and all you, it's my responsibility to make sure that they're taking care of both physically and mentally, so it was important that we just shared that with them and they do have a a an avenue or a source to uh, for discussion should they need that, so. Um, being mentally healthy in this business is just as important as being physically mentally, so it's good, so. Saying that with the incident, um, I received a call on December sixth from the superintendent, um, Steve Archibald. I wanted to discuss some ideas with me about having one of our officers in the middle schools. Uh, because currently they do not have a sheriff in there. Um, so I immediately contacted Paul and said, hey, listen, uh, Steve Archibald wants to talk with me. Uh, I'll just keep you advised of what's going on. I met with Steve the next day and he wanted to have somebody actually inside the schools as soon as possible. Talked about the responsibilities. We talked about the compensation for it that the schools are going to pay the city. Um, so right now, we kind of have a tentative verbal agreement right now, a a, an official contract is being drawn up. They're going to um, basically pay for the, one of our officers, the uh, wages and salaries, the benefits. Uh, everything that comes with that for the rest of the school year, which will take up us just about the end of our fiscal year. Um, so he is actually in there now. He's taking care of both the millennium and centennial, and I can tell you, he's been very, very busy. Last week I was actually fielding calls with him. Um, so it's not the threats or the suspicious circumstances, the things you might get with the older students, but just some of the things that uh, the kids, they're just smart enough to not be smart enough to know that what they're saying and what they're doing is 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 not the right thing to do, so. We feel that a lot of complaints, uh, we sent some up to the prosecutor's office. We're waiting for results on those right now. Let me see. So what we got right now is we had to take one of our officers, Officer Walton. He's actually off the road and he's in the schools for the remainder of the year. Now, when they have school break and Christmas break, he'll be back and helping the detective or acting as a detective and being back on the road taking calls. In the meantime, we had to take Detective Rapp off of the Detective Bureau, put him on the road to cover Officer Walton's spot, so. We're actually kind of, our our resources are a little bit thin right now. I don't know if you guys remember back in two thousand eight, we actually had eighteen officers. In two thousand uh, nine, in the downturn, we lost one. Then in two thousand fourteen, when one retired, we lost a second one, so. Over the last number of years, we've been doing a lot more with a lot less with two different officers. Now, we had to take one of the officers who are responsible for the accreditation program. This is completely, that's his assignment. That's what he's been doing. That's what he does throughout his day. And so now we have another officer that's going to be in the schools for the rest of the year, so if somebody goes down on an injury or disability or something, then we're going to be really, really um, shy. Uh, there's going to be some overtime being put out to cover those shifts and I'm I'm concerned with bar, blah, blah, burnout, so. It was my plan in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three to request a, another full-time officer to assist or take over from the officer that was put in the accreditation part now. Now we have another officer down, so. I I'm thinking that we really need to act sooner than later to at least try and get another officer in there, because right now we are operating without a detective. Uh, the follow-up has been assigned basically to our accreditation officer who is going to try and get some assistance from our two daytime sergeants. When they're not taking calls, they can actually do some follow-up, so. Uh, I'll be coming with you in the first uh, meeting of December or actually January to see what we can do about getting in there, maybe possibly a budget amendment or using the funds that we're actually getting from the South Line Community Schools to help offset that cost until the next fiscal year comes up, so. Uh, you'll be hearing more from me as I discuss that with Paul and Patricia. I have discussed some numbers with Patricia as far as moving forward and the numbers, uh, the funds that we do receive from the South Line Community Schools will will more than offset that cost to have an officer start early. If we can have him get going by March, it's going to take him at least three and a half months to get completely off of his his field training. Um, even if we take an officer with experience, we can't just put them out sooner because they, the accreditation mandates us that we go through a fully uh, certified field training program. Uh, and there are no shortcuts because of liability, so if we start him at either like February, he'll be ready by the middle of May. If we started in March, he'll be ready by the middle of June, so. We're going to be shorthanded for a while and I just hope that nobody goes down early, so. That's our plan. We've been busy and a little bit stressed out, but we're coming out of it right now, but um, I think as a team, we operate really well as a team. We all help each other out and um, so I like where we're at right now. Uh, I like the police department. We've been doing more with less and we'll continue to do that. You're not going to see any any uh, downside in services when you call us. We're going to be there. We're still going to continue our our community-oriented policing's our business and citizen context, so you shouldn't see any, any lack of service, so. Uh, that's all I have for you tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that was a deep update there, Chief, and I certainly appreciate it. Um, does anyone have anything for Chief Sobek tonight? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Chris, I was kind of curious. First off, the um, the accreditation. It uh, is Murma rewarding us at all as a product of being complicit with that, that whole program?
No, they are not. There are certain grants that we get through Murma and uh, we've applied for them. We're looking into a a very large grant that's going to be uh, that that MACP, the Michigan Association Chief of Police has been putting out to us. We're working with other agencies that have gone through this cert, they haven't gone through the accreditation process. Uh, and so we will be eventually, I don't know if it's on a yearly basis, but we're going to be applying for a very large grant to take care of a lot of the things that we have been buying and experiencing and having to do as far as training to get reimbursed for that, so. And uh, when I say substantially large, I'm talking tens of thousands of dollars, so that's something that we are currently looking into.
I I can understand it being expensive and I I could, but I could also see Murma seeing that as a reward for them not having to have liability issues downstream, so maybe that would be in their best interest to to give us more incentive to move in that direction. Uh, the other thing was uh, CSX and the the crossings is uh, can somebody please let them know that they have the responsibility to operate that?
Yeah, you know, I that two, two hours just unacceptable. Now, we do have these, we do have these makeshift train sticks that actually kind of just prop these things up just so it helps us direct traffic back and forth, but we have to still stay out there. In case a train does come, we don't want these things propped up because we have a responsibility. Now, CSX will tell us, listen, we don't want these. You guys really shouldn't be doing this, but they're not saying, don't do it. Because they know the hassle, so I mean, once they finally get out there, it doesn't take them long to get things going, but you know, two hours is just really unacceptable. It really is.
I'm just surprised that it it's a, it's become sort of more routine than you would think that would be reasonable to them, so.
Yeah, back in the day, I mean, we used to be able to send these guys citations, like if if the train tracks were down, train gates were down more than five minutes, we can sell them these pretty hefty fines. Well, that got declared unconstitutional years ago, and so we don't really have any recourse other than to sit out there in the freezing cold and just direct traffic around it just to be safe.
Right. I know Bodie's out in Plymouth. They really got hammered by that cat finding. Uh, man, the the train parked right across the street there. The um, the last thing I wanted to ask was uh, the idea of having the staff that you've got and they're already taxed as much as your, you've uh, suggested. Um, that whole idea of the um, take care of those that take care of us or whatever your your saying had been earlier in your comments. Uh, that, I mean, that really holds in spades. You, we certainly need to make sure that people have vehicles to find some help in the event that they they just need to talk with somebody, you know, to to clear their head and that type of thing. So I I'm really grateful that you guys see the value in that whole operation.
Yeah, yeah, Paul's pretty good about that, too. He always, he's always reminding, listen, if you guys need to talk to somebody, then obviously, we can make it happen, but um, you know, we've had so many discussions about that, you know, from the the shooting last uh, last New Year's Eve and some other critical incidents. Uh, we always, we always have that in conversation and then uh, our guys are always the first, listen, if you need something, we'll we'll get you the help no matter what it is, so.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I sort of want to chat a little bit about this school resource officer. Uh, I find it interesting that the department is strapped for personnel and some of it is is self-imposed. Because you are now taking one of your officers, putting them into the school district. Um, and now we are losing a detective. So I just sort of want to get that out there. Uh, for me, it has never been about um, putting a South Line Police Officer in the school district. That, that's not the issue. The issue is the financial responsibility. And that's where there is the uh, the clash of the ideologies as to whose accounting ledger is responsible for carrying that cost. And I have always argued, I will continue to argue, um, and my votes are very consistent, is that that is the school district's line item. That is, that comes out of their budget. So I want to make sure that when you say we are, you are getting coverage, reimbursement for wages, salaries and benefits, that includes overtime, that includes whatever the premium is that that officer is paying for healthcare. Are are we covering the city's contribution into the retirement? Because that individual is is not not going to be an employee really of the city. I mean, that employee going into the school is costing us a detective. So I want to make sure that every item in that union contract is being reimbursed by the school district. That's their line item. That's like going to the grocery stores and going to the hardware stores in the city and saying, here, you want a police officer? Well, we'll give you one. All you gotta do is just, you know, we'll take care of it. That's what the school's asking. And it's really their financial responsibility and it's not the city's. Because when, when this happened in the past, you know, and that superintendent needs to understand that they came to the residents of South Lion and asked for a tenth of a billion dollars in a bond. So while they're getting a new pool and while they're getting new astroturf, you know, that's their priority, their capital expenditures.
Right.
You know, their real priority is safety in the schools and somehow they're not getting it.
Yeah, you know, before we actually agreed anything, right now there's an official contract being drawn up. I talked to Paul about it. Uh, and I talked to Patricia as far as the numbers go. Uh, basically, we took all of the officer's pay, his overtime pay, his cost of living, uh, all the benefits and all the medical benefits of a family, the insurance that costs. And I divided that by fifty-two, so we have a certain amount of weeks. He's going to actually be in the school for the total of twenty-three weeks. That's not going to be counting, you know, Christmas break and spring breaks, so twenty-three weeks, so we're, I mean, we're just about there. I mean, it was plus it was an issue for us that we needed to make sure that uh, we wanted to continue the working relationship with South Line Community Schools, so it's very, very, i- it's right there, so uh, we plus we felt an obligation that we needed to participate and uh, and help the schools out in the situation. So as far as money goes now, from what I understand, uh, the superintendent approached me and he wants us to be in there next year. So we're going to have to do some more negotiating, but we're just talking about the end of this fiscal year, the school year and our fiscal year, and so those numbers are are right there.
Well, here, here's the argument for why the school district needs to get their act together and start including this cost as a line item in their budget. I don't care who they hire. I don't care if they hire the Oakland County Sheriff. I don't care if they hire you. I don't care if they go over to Green Oak. I don't care who they hire and put in their schools. They need to be held accountable for the safety of the children. And that means you make it a line item in your budget, not my budget, in their budget. Because what happened in the past is that you have senior citizens up there in Colonial Acres that are getting taxed to death. And now they've got a tenth of a billion dollar bond that they're now paying. They now, we're going to be going to them this year, asking for additional bond money for roads. Property taxes are increasing. And you now want the city of South Lion to subsidize safety for the school district that is getting tens of thousands of dollars from the state and are not sitting down and grinding that pencil like we do during the budget season? Somebody needs to sit that superintendent down and say, this is your cost. You are going to front it, not the city of South Lion, because I'll tell you this right now. Um, uh, Salem isn't going to kick in. Green Oak isn't going to kick in. You have a portion of Northfield that has students that come into the South Lane School District. They're not kicking in. You have some students that are just on the borderline by Novia and Milford. They're not kicking in. This is their budget issue and the, and additionally, I want to see that contract. Because they better use the school resource officer, because they didn't use their school resource officer up in Oxford that they were paying for or somebody was paying for. So there, if we're going to pay for a school resource officer, somewhere in that contract, that school better use that school resource officer. Because if they're not going to come to you when they got an issue with a kid drawing a picture about a gun and they don't think that's important enough to come to a school resource officer, then what are you in the school district to begin with? So they need to change their paradigm. They really do. They really, really do. And I will not vote it this, this winter, when we were working on the budget. If any of the cost of that resource officer is coming out of the city, I will not vote for that budget. That is their responsibility. And if they have a problem finding the money, I'll come over and spend an hour and I'll find it for them. Because I've looked at their budget. And there is money in that budget to pay for these school resource officers.
Right. I I appreciate your 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 comments, Councilmember Kurtzwell. I know we had some discussions about this in the past. I know that um, you know, before anything official gets we're talking down the road next year, they want us to have it and you know, I'll have conversations with Paul and and Patricia and then we'll all meet together with the superintendents to make sure that we're all on the same page and express those sentiments, because I think we feel the same way that you do too. So as far as the operations, I don't, I don't know what their operations are. I don't know what their budget is. I just know that when when I was down at the school and we have a complaints, uh, the teachers and the administrators are more than happy. They are so quick to give us the complaint. And then we followed up until whether it goes to prosecution or we can just dismiss it as nothing, but uh, we're very thorough with the investigation, but as far as the procedures of the school and everything, I know it's a different subject. I have no control over that, but as far as the budgeting and the the negotiating, uh, we will take part in that and make sure that um, uh, I guess maybe share your sentiment on that as well. So when the time comes, we will cross that bridge and we'll be prepared for it.
Yeah, but Chris, that's what's fair to our residents. That's what's fair to our residents. What's fair to the residents that I represent in the city, it's fair. I'm not asking for the world. I'm just asking for what's fair.
Sure.
When you have, when you have residents that are paying on a school bond, that are going to be paying on a road bond, that are paying for an increase in property taxes, it's only fair that the school district pays for that school resource officer.
Sure.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson, then I'm coming to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
I I'm not going to get into the uh, budgeting as far as
I, I'm not going to get into the uh, budgeting as far as uh, what uh, the city is paying for versus what uh, the council is paying for in regards to the protection of our students and kids. But I did want to actually get into um, uh, the positive nature of what the uh, Southland Police Department is actually doing. Um, I, I would like to uh, commend you for offering a gun locks for our residents that might not have gun locks. And I appreciate you bringing uh, attention to that again in social media most recently. Um, and I was curious if you'd be uh, happy to share any stories you might have as far as passing out those free gun locks to our residents.
People come in, we have, when this, when this initiative took place years ago, somebody asked me, how many do you think you need? And I said, well, I'll take fifty. I didn't know that they were going to give us fifty cases. So we have hundreds and hundreds of cases. That's why we say one to ten. If you want twenty, you got twenty guns, you want twenty locks, we'll give them to you. But we've never turned anybody away. We always try and give out more than what we have. So we have an abundance and if we run out, I'll get more.
Now, thank, thank you so much for what you're doing. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So Chris, I think what I heard you say is that uh, working with uh, Patricia and so forth, you've come up at least in the, the interim here, what the cost is for that officer for his loaded uh, salary and et cetera, benefits, the whole ball of wax as it currently stands. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that basically covers uh, you know, so the total obligation goes on the, the school, which is exactly where it should be. The concern I have is, you know, I know that you said you're only doing this for, you know, whatever, however many weeks it is that takes you through June. And yet, you know, if we don't have a signed contract, you want to go ahead and move to start, you know, backfilling that with another body. And if they don't sign the contract and want that person next year, uh, we're putting another person on that we may or may not need to add. If that person doesn't go back into the schools. So I think it kind of behooves us to find out if they're going to make a commitment to paying for that, uh, that individual uh, for the, uh, the upcoming uh, school year as well, before we backfill and add another person to the uh, the police department. The other thing is, and just uh, out of curiosity, when we uh, when we put somebody into the schools, um, I'm assuming it's, it could potentially be a junior officer, it could be the most expensive officer we have. How is that being priced? Is it being priced as our most senior officers so that we've got the flexibility, depending on who's there and if we put in uh, somebody that has less than twenty-two years' experience, he's, he's still covered. But if we're pricing it out as, here's the wages and everything else for one of the more junior officers and all of a sudden we have to put one of the senior officers in, are we running at a deficit? How is the price based? Is it based on a specific individual or a general officer's cost?
It is. Most of our officers are a top A minus the last three that we've hired over the last couple of years. So all of our officers are a top A. Officer Walton is uh, he was actually in the school in two thousand eight before they got pulled because of budget cuts. He's back in there. He's one of our top officers. They're covering his expense for the rest of our fiscal year.
Okay, and that's great, and that's great, Chris, because like I said, you know, I don't want to be pricing Officer Jacobs and then turn around and put Officer Walton in there kind of.
Right, right.
Okay, but again, before we make the decision on backfilling, you know, to replace this individual, I think we need to know and have some sort of commitment that they want to pay that for the coming year. Uh, and we, we know that that's going to take place. Otherwise, we're adding somebody and when that officer comes out of the school at the end of the, the school year, uh, we got more people than uh, we actually needed, I guess, at that point, because everybody goes back to where they were.
Right, well, we're, we're waiting on an official contract from the schools right now. We should have it. I should have that sometime this week as far as the, the officer for this year. Um, like I said before, I was actually before, before this school officer even came into effect, I was going to request a second officer to help with the accreditation process and the demands on that. So really, I mean, the, I'm not looking to backfill that one because of the school officer. I'm looking to backfill that one because of the accreditation officer that we have assigned full-time. One of our officers now that was on the road is doing the accreditation full-time and he's going to remain, he's going to remain doing that as long as he's here because the requirement for the accreditation is a full-time job and, and from what I understand, the uh, the re-accreditation every three years is even more demanding than what we're going through right now. So that's where we're at right now. I will hopefully try and have more discussions with him, with the superintendent as the time goes on to assure us that he wants us in there. Uh, my initial discussions with him and uh, talking with Paul is that he wants us in there next year as well. And that's when the discussion as far as monetary contributions will come into effect.
Okay, that's, that's great. And, and as Councilmember Kurtzwell said, this is a school expenditure. This is an operating expense for them, just like providing janitorial staff, custodial staff, food services, whatever. And uh, they need to own it in its entirety.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Yeah, the real, the real issue is equity. I mean, the entire school district has to be paying their, their fair share for whoever's taking that role. Um, okay, the the uh, the accreditation thing, obviously you must be feeling confident that there's a, a return on that investment for the community. Is this, is it driven by uh, a lack of liability at that point, or is it driven by the fact that it, it enhances the skill sets that these guys already hold? Uh, what, what is the, the real uh, impetus for the accreditation thing?
You know, with the police reform, everything is coming down. We need to have the best possible practices, policies, guidelines uh, in order to reduce liability. Uh, with all the different police reform coming through, um, this, this program assures us that we are heading in the right direction, doing the right thing. Uh, it is going to help us um, procure federal funding in the future, because if you're not accredited, then you don't be eligible for certain federal funding. Um, it, it will help as far as liability and lawsuits. Uh, as long as we have the best possible practices, um, very, very few, if any lawsuits are going to be coming because of the accreditation processes already proven in other police departments. Um, just transparency. You need to see a policy, you need to know how we handle things. You want to know that we're going to, we have a duty in our process to, duty to intervene as far as use of force situations. Then yes, we have that as well. So uh, there's a lot more, like you said, training. Uh, we're going to receive a lot more training as far as being professional in certain things. The use of force, the use of weapons, the use of non-lethal weapons. Um, so many more requirements of this just to make sure that you are basically at, at your best and performing at your best and reducing liability to your agency and to your, your city.
I think those are all wonderful traits and that, that makes a great deal of sense. It also seems uh, uh, obviously nothing of, of real value comes without an awful lot of effort being put into it. But it seems as though this is a very expensive enterprise to get people tuned up. And uh, I, in, in the long run, it's well in our best interest to have everybody, I mean, de-escalation of situations, that all that kind of stuff is, is they're all going to be mantras in tomorrow's policing, you know? Um, so I'm, I'm really grateful that you're ahead of the curve and everybody's looking at it that, in that regard. I'm just, I just was curious what the breadth of the value of this whole accreditation was and why it would be as, as expensive to us as it is. So thank you for explaining that.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question. Um, and just thinking about this, and I'm sure this is covered somehow. I know there's resource officers everywhere, but with um, if an officer is uh, accused of um, of doing something they shouldn't do while they're in the school as a resource officer, if they uh, you know, they think that they, you know, they're overly aggressive or whatever. Is that, uh, and there's some kind of a lawsuit or something like that? I mean, is that, they are still our employee, correct?
Correct, yes. If there is some type of allegation of wrongdoing or depending on what that is, I mean, if he's violated a policy or whatever, then we'll have an internal investigation. If he's accused of something criminally or something more than that, obviously, uh, we will contact an outside agency to perform the investigation just because of the conflict of interest.
I think I, all I meant was if there was some kind of a lawsuit, it would be a city lawsuit then.
I would think so as well as, and I, I would think because of his, his relationship with the school, that the school would be involved as well. Now, I, I'm not a lawyer. I don't, and I can, maybe can't speak to that, but I know the school. He's actually a school employee. He's working for the school because we have a contract with him. So even though he is a member of the Southland Police Department, he's a an employee of the school. So I don't know exactly how that would work, but I would think that there would be some type of um, something I can look into as far as the school goes, but.
Just a, I just a question to, to ask or, or wonder how that might work out. I mean, hopefully it doesn't ever happen, but obviously these kind of lawsuit situations do occur.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Uh, perhaps uh, City Attorney Hamamay might weigh in on the some of that. Uh, I mean, if it's a, a Southland Police Officer, you know, I, I gotta believe he's still a uh, Southland Police employee, not a school employee. We just contracted him. That's where he happens to be working, but let's, perhaps the, the lawyer would have something to say in that regard.
Absolutely.
Um, it would depend. Yes, the answer is he would be a Southland employee. Generally, those types of contracts specifically state that they'd be an independent contractor to the school district. But I have not seen the proposed contract. I don't know what they're proposing. When I review contracts with the city manager and the chief, um, we reach out to risk management and get their analysis to incorporate into whatever agreement. So we'll do whatever we can to protect the city, of course. Obviously, there's no guarantees, but we do the best we can.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Make sure you include an indemnification. Let the school district pay for our defense.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
Just one last thing. In, in today's world, everybody's going to be sued. So um, you know, that it's going to be the schools, us, and maybe the churches or something for not being hit influencer, influential enough. I don't know.
Uh, Chief Sobek, I was on a district today uh, for a doctor's appointment, but I'll be sure to check in with Officer Walton tomorrow and make sure he has everything he needs technology-wise and getting started over there. So.
Yeah, he, he requested your phone number, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, that's, that's, that's perfect. Yep, no, that's great. I will check in with him tomorrow. So does anyone else have anything for Chief Sobek tonight? All right, thanks, Chief. Great update.
Thanks.
We will move on to new business this evening. Uh, new business number one, Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Mayor and Council, we're going to be bringing Kelly and Hannah from our CIB planning on tonight to discuss the Parks and Rec Master Plan of the public hearing that we're going to be uh, holding. I believe Lisa's going to bring both of them on to be able to speak with you and introduce and answer questions on the subject.
My on?
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize. Waiting for delay. Well, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor and Paul. Um, this evening, this item is brought to you from the um, Parks and Recreation Committee, um, Commission. I'm sorry. It is, you're looking at a resolution to adopt the City of Southline Parks and Rec Master Plan uh, for the years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six. Um, this master plan is the official document that will be used by the city, the staff, commission and community to guide the decisions regarding parks and recreation in the city. Additionally, the plan is intended to meet the state standard guidelines for community recreation planning. Um, that is what is necessary in order for the city to apply for grants. Um, we last saw you um, late summer when we um, came to with this proposal. Um, and we put together a pretty aggressive timeframe, um, CIB Planning with Russell Designs. Um, I believe Mark Russell is also on the call um, here um, with us. Um, with guidance and inputs um, and participation from the Parks and Rec Commission themselves. So this has been drafted. Um, it has been made available for review by the public. Uh, we placed it in several locations. Um, we did a public hearing notice um, for review. Uh, and we are now required to have a public hearing. So that is what we're going to do tonight. We will have a public hearing. Um, I would, before we actually do that, I would like to um, bring on Hannah Smith. Um, she is with CIB Planning. She has a um, quick presentation that she would like to provide. That way, if anyone in the audience um, hasn't actually seen um, or looked through the draft plan, they can get an idea what's in there. So after Hannah presents um, that, then we can have a um, public hearing, open it up and then um, discussions and hopefully approval of the resolution. So with your permission, I'd like to hand it over to Hannah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, okay, I'm going to try and share my screen. Okay, is that good? Everyone can see?
Looks good.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so thank you and good evening to everyone. Um, my name is Hannah Smith. I'm a planner with uh, CIB Planning. Um, as Kelly said, I'm joined by her from CIB and Mark Russell from Russell Design um, to talk about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we've been working on. So as you know, this is an update to the existing Parks and Recreation Plan that covered the five-year period um, from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one. Um, and the purpose of this plan is to inventory recreation opportunities and facilities that are available to residents, identify problems and needs and establish strategies to address those needs. Um, since the last plan was approved, the DNR has come out with updated guidelines for the development of community parks and recreation plans. Um, so a big part of this plan update was focused on meeting the new guidelines. And I just wanted to know, Kelly touched on this, um, but why it's important that the city is updating the plan and util- utilizing these new guidelines. The city has to have an up-to-date Parks and Rec Master Plan that meets all of the requirements uh, to be eligible to apply for grants. So this will allow the city to be eligible to apply for land and water conservation, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund and Waterways Grants. Um, so that being said, I'm just going to talk about some of the key changes in the updated plan, uh, many of which reflect the requirements of these new guidelines. So the first two chapters really just cover some community description. Um, this includes updated demographic and housing data and information on administrative structure of the city. Um, there are more details required with the new guidelines. So for example, a more robust um, section on funding and budget information that was previously included in the plan. And this is just um, the table that reflects information from the city's budget for uh, Parks and Rec. The recreation inventory is one of the biggest parts of this plan. Um, this is where we examined each park and took inventory of the Parks and Rec spaces and facilities that are available. So part of the section involves a map showing the location of all facilities and then a detailed table that shows what kind of amenities are offered at each park. One of the biggest parts of the updated state guidelines is focused on the accessibility of the parks. Um, it requires that the plan include a detailed accessibility assessment for each park against ADA standards. Um, and each one has to be rated based on the grading system provided. So that's this one-to-five grading system um, that you can see in the table included in the plan. Um, and each park has to be evaluated and assigned a score. And how we did that uh, was by taking the ADA guidelines and made a list of applicable standards for each park. So items like accessible routes, parking, play areas, benches, things like that, um, and assess the park against those lists. And this is just a piece of the list that was created for McCatty Park. Um, but the whole list for every park is included in the supporting documentation. So with these elements, we created a profile for each park that encompasses the inventory, accessibility assessment, and for some of the parks, the master plans that are in the works. Um, I included McCatty Park here just to show an example of what those profiles look like that we made. Um, so this just highlights some of the key features. We tried to put in a lot of nice photos. Um, and then it also includes the master plan designed by Russell Design. Um, and Mark is here to answer if there are design-specific questions. And then the accessibility assessment highlights characteristics like accessible routes. So that would be um, like the, the path going through the park is accessible but needs better access to the sports areas and the playground equipment. Um, also things like parking, playground areas, uh, among others. And then all of these go into the accessibility rating, which currently for McCatty Park, it's at a two. Um, however, with the improvements included in the Park Master Plan, that rating would be increased. And that's all noted in the text. And the inventory also includes details on other recreational facilities uh, that Southline residents have access to. So this includes Southline Community School District facilities, which are laid out um, in a, a big table. And then it also includes private facilities and regional facilities like here on Clinton Metropolitan Authority Parks and And then it also includes private facilities and regional facilities like here on Clinton Metropolitan Authority Parks and State Parks. And then, like any other plan, public input is a key element, and facilitation of early input was a main requirement of the state guidelines as well. So to do this, we administered an online public input survey, which was distributed on the website. Some neighborhoods posted it on their Facebook pages. You might have seen flyers posted at some of the parks or handouts at City Hall and City Events. We had 160 responses, which is a pretty good response rate. And some of the key takeaways, the parks are visited and used often by city residents for a number of activities. Some needed, I, some needed facilities that were identified include splash pad, splash pad trails, expanded playground equipment, a recreation center, pickleball courts, which a number of those are already in the works. And in addition to early input, as Kelly said, the draft plan was made available for a 30-day review period where copies were available for review and comment at different locations in the city and online. And then the public hearing tonight is another opportunity for public input. Goals and actions are another big part of this plan. These goals were built upon the ones from the previous plan. We took those and evaluated what had been met, what was still pertinent, and incorporated new and additional goals based on input from the survey and the Parks and Rec Commission. And so we developed six overarching goals, and each of those has actions that are more concentrated towards specific items or actions. And the goals are just paraphrased here, but they put a focus on providing land and facilities that meet the needs of the city, continuing to enhance existing and new spaces, improving maintenance operations, providing programming for all ages and interests, and prioritizing accessibility. And the more detailed fleshed-out goals and then actions under each one can be found in the plan. And another requirement of the new guidelines is an expanded action program, which lays out a general plan for when projects will be undertaken to help meet some of the established goals. So the way we set this up was by timeframe. There's near-term, midterm, long-term, and ongoing projects with general estimated costs for each project included in the program. We thought setting it up this way allows the city some extra flexibility instead of putting specific dollar amounts and timelines for every single project. And then, as you can see in the action program table here, the projects are detailed for each timeframe. And these include things like starting phases of the park-specific plans, planning and construction of specific projects, and ongoing actions and capital improvements. And then a good chunk of the pages in the plan, as you might have seen, is the supporting documentation, which is the state guidelines have a long list of what needs to be included in that section. So there you can find all of the survey response data from everybody that responded. Accessibility checklist for each park that were created, information on public input opportunities, meeting minutes, and more. And some of these will be added in following this meeting into the very final draft. So that was a very quick and rapid summary of what we've been working on the past few months, but I just wanted to bring it back to the timeline that you saw a few months ago. It's been a very fast-paced update process, but having a plan before you tonight, like Kelly said, allows us to keep on track to have it submitted to the DNR by the February 2022 deadline to be eligible to apply for grants next year. And that's all that I have to present. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have along with Kelly and Mark.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I'm curious, there's on page 21, the map two speaks to, it describes the Parks and Rec facilities available to the community. There's a, there's approximately a two-month or two-mile stretch of bike paths that don't seem to be accounted for in there, and it seems like with how much use we get out of those and the potential for getting grant monies as a product of how many linear feet you've got of bike path, that it would be in our best interest to have that accounted for. And the, the two areas that I'm talking about are when you get to the, to the west side of the building of MST, it's the path that runs north-south. It, it, it pretty much brushes across the eastern border of the wastewater treatment plant and goes straight down to Eight Mile on the east side of Volunteer Park. That's a long stretch, and then the other section would be from South Street over by Mill, going around the cemetery down to Andover Park in Oak Creek subdivision. Those two sections are probably cumulatively about two miles worth of path. And maybe they're described somewhere else, but they're, they certainly weren't in the list of facilities that I had looked through. And it seems as I, like I said, as a funding mechanism, it seems like we would get more bang out of having longer amount of bike path to be in our threshold, so.
Yeah, that's certainly something that, that we can add in. I think that that's a really good idea. Yeah.
I'm just kind of, I'm surprised that it would have been overlooked because they are such a hot item in the city. They get a great deal of use.
Yeah, I think we took what was based on inventory in the previous plan and built off of that, so it could have been if they were, you know, left out at that time, but it certainly is helpful to include as, as much as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if we don't have anything else, city manager Zelnik, would you, do we go and open the public hearing then?
Yes, there is a requirement of having the public hearing that is discussed. It is the items as Parks and Rec Master Plan, public hearing. The topic, the Rec Master Plan is complete and ready for adoption. The public hearing is required prior to the adoption of the plan. Councils hold the public hearing this evening. They made this short presentation, so the requirement is the mayor for you to open the public hearing. Now it's the time of the public hearing. Take any comments that are available. Lisa will be able to see online to see if anybody's raising their hand. This is not necessarily the time for council make, to make comments. This is the time for the public to make comments. And then you shall close the public hearing if there are no further comments, and then it goes to the adoption of the resolution. Kelly, am I missing anything at all, or is that just the, is that the complete requirement?
That is the complete requirement, yes.
All right, great. Well, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the Parks and Rec Master Plan at eight forty-seven. City Clerk Deaton, if you could please take a minute and see if we have anyone willing to speak.
Do not have anyone raising their hand at the moment.
At this time, we will close the public hearing on the Parks and Recs Master Plan at eight forty-eight. And, oh, Councilmember Kennedy, thank you. I missed you there, bud. Go ahead. Oh, you're, you're muted, councilmember.
Before we talk about adopting the, the resolution, do we need to have the, the bike path included that Councilmember Kibble is mentioned and have the, the plan complete? Or more complete? The other thing that was in there, and I can't seem to find it right now, is where we listed the cost of the, the expenditure for that Wigo swing at thirty-some thousand dollars when the cost for it was closer to fifty when we included the cost plus the installation. So I don't know if it needs to be more accurate than what's currently contains as well before we adopt the resolution.
I can speak to the, the Wigo swing item. We did in the action program table, it was, the cost was updated to reflect the fifty thousand dollars. In the table from the budget, since it was taken directly from the budget document, we just kept the number the same as what it was when that was published, but in terms of the actual cost reflected later in the plan, that was, that was updated.
You're talking about the one where you put two-dollar signs instead of one that you had originally there? Okay, and what about the bike path? Does that need to be in this before we adopt this thing?
I wonder if, and Kelly might know better than me, I don't know if it can be, if it can be adopted subject to the addition. I'm not sure, Kelly, if you know. Yes, I mean, it certainly can. We can do that if you would like to see that before you adapt the resolution. My only concern, Hannah, what is the timeframe? Since we don't have another meeting in December, we would have to wait until January in order to do that if you wanted to see it prior to. I'd have to quickly look at the timeline and the calendar to make sure that we can make the, the deadline. I think we can make it happen. We just have to, after you adopt the resolution, we have some paperwork that we need to do. We have to fill out a checklist and submit it to the DNR for them to accept the plan. That all has to be done before February in order to us to be eligible for the grants. So it, at the council's discretion, you, you can tell us how you would like us to proceed with that, but we will make it work.
City manager Zellnick, go ahead.
I don't think the correction on the maps substantially changes anything within the plan. It's just merely making a correction that shows where our existing pathways are. It's not only on page twenty-one, but it's also on page forty. There's two of those maps that are on there. But it doesn't necessarily change anything about what the future plan is, just like there may be a typo in regard to a spelling or something like that. Or if a river isn't on there, it doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. It just, it's just something that needs to be added to the document. So I'd recommend that if the council was considering approving it, that they would do it at this particular meeting instead of waiting or postponing it for a following month.
And will that omission be corrected then?
Yes, I think Hannah had already stated that they would make those changes.
Councilmember Hanson, then I'm coming over to you, Councilmember Kittle.
Actually, Paul just touched on what I was gonna ask my question about in regards to the SEMCOG grant that we got in regards to a analysis of our path system. And from what Paul was saying, that this plan would actually be potentially amended, or at least we'd be updated as far as the findings of that grant at that time. So from what I guess I'm hearing is that once we get the results from that grant back, we'll get an amendment maybe to this plan, or at least an update to the path systems that would augment what we've got here in our packets.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
It might end up, actually, some of those lines on the, the map themselves might end up being the indicators that they're on the map. I was just wondering if you could just change the narrative that would describe where those would be located or, or what their length was, just so that we could have something that could be quantified for how many square feet of roadway or whatever it would be. You know, so that you could put a, a dollar sign on how much that value would be of that, so.
Yes. Absolutely.
Well, with that, I mean, are we going to, to have an amendment to the, the narrative to do that, or are we just going to sit on what, what SEMCOG's version of our paths are?
Well, we're, we're waiting for that grant to be completed. Once their analysis comes back, I would expect that that would directly impact the path system.
So it's kind of important that it's described.
Ms. McIntyre, go ahead.
We will describe it today as it is. We'll make sure that we get the narrative in there. I'm not sure when the findings from SEMCOG will come back. I'm not sure if that would be back in time for us to make that revision to the initial adoption of the plan. We can certainly do an amendment to the plan that reflects those findings, but I think at this point, we can provide the narrative and maybe make sure more clearly on the maps that those, that those paths are there, even if they are in the lines, just make that more noticeable, more understanding. Understandable, yeah.
Councilmember Kittle?
Well, my, my, my pure interest is solely that we can make a case with any kind of funding mechanism that might end up giving us a grant to amend our, our paths. That's that's really the long and the short of it. So if we don't have a description of it, then it, it's going to be much more difficult for us to explain that.
Absolutely, and the point is absolutely well-taken, and you are correct. We need to describe it if we're going to talk about in our plan, if we are going to hopefully be able to realize some funding for continuation and improvements.
Mark Russell, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I think to Paul's point too, and this discussion, I, I think that it would be appropriate to adopt this plan. You know, whether or not you guys want to have us bring something back to you as a document, you know, for your use, if you will, prior to submitting to the state. But in an effort to, you know, keep us moving toward that deadline, which also is imperative, right, for us to get funding and, and get this document approved. I think by, by what Kelly was talking about, providing that narrative. And then also with Hannah, we can certainly provide that additional graphic on the plan that would describe, you know, that path system now, and, and maybe that narrative needs to, to tap into the SEMCOG project right now, and we're kind of waiting for that, and then we can follow up with amendment to the plan like Kelly is saying, following the M dot, or the SEMCOG findings.
The only misgiving is it's five years that we've, we're sitting on this document if it's not, not in there and. The description had been that they can't, the public hearing has to be approval of what the document actually states, and it's being approved right now. So if it's not in there, then how are we supposed to approve that? For five years.
I think that the, the resolution certainly describes the, the actual document that is before you. I think, can, can we not, Kelly, have this be a subject to? Or do we need to come back in January with this document? You know, and if we have to follow that protocol, you know, then we would just need to come back in January for that, for that adoption.
Thank you. Just a moment. City Attorney Hamame, do you have any feedback on this? I, I tend to like to lean on the lawyers when we start getting into this type of stuff. So if, if you have anything, I'm, I'm all ears.
So I would just be a little bit concerned only because they are so technical when you're submitting these resolutions. That I, I would think if we think that there's a potential of a need for an amendment in the future after we find out about the grant, I would suggest we go forward as presented, as noticed, and then plan on doing an amendment to the master plan once we find out about the grant that might require additional changes. With the understanding that you've explained what you want in this amendment.
That's a good point.
I feel better about that. Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead. Oh, you're muted, councilmember.
This goes to the city attorney. When I look at the resolution, the first whereas, it says the City of South Lion is undertaking a planning process to determine the recreational needs and desires of its residents during the five-year period covering the years 2022 through 2026. Why can't you just say comma and as may be amended from time to time?
So I will defer to Kelly on that, but I am fairly confident you can only amend your master plan by resolution of city council. I don't think you can adopt something in the future.
Well, no, but you're saying in the resolution that it's gonna be amended from time to time. And then when it comes back to us in January, there'll be another resolution adopting the resolution. And then when it comes back to us in January, there'll be another resolution adopting the resolution, adopting the amendment.
Yes.
Or do you not need to take that step?
I get, I'm sorry, I'm not following your, I'm not following.
Well, why don't you just say in the resolution that you're going to amend the the plan down the line? Why don't you just tell them so that then you're honest and you're letting them know that, hey, there may be some amendments coming. So it's in the resolution tonight. And then in January, when they bring everything back with with the amendments, there'll be a second resolution that will then say we are now adopting. Or do you not need to take that step? That first step? You don't need to put it in the initial resolution? It's a wordsmith thing.
Yeah, wouldn't it wouldn't seem to me that you would need to put in, you know, or subsequent amendments or whatever the terminology is. I think you just we have a resolution for this particular plan. As we move forward, you know, there may be additional amendments. And we don't know if it's going to happen in January. We don't know if it's going to happen after the plan is approved by the DNR. There are other vehicles that we don't have control over, i.e. SEMCOG, you know, and their timing. And if we have to wait for SEMCOG before we go back, you know, for an amendment, we don't want to have subsequent amendments, right? You know, more and more amendments. We want to be able to to gather this information, do it one time, and then come back to you folks to adopt the amendment resolve the amendment, and then we submit that again to the DNR. I think, Kelly, you know, I'm not trying to put your words in your mouth, but I think that that might be easier and probably more practical and I think more familiar with with the DNR and their in their protocol.
I would agree.
I'll just say too, there there are in the guidelines, very detailed guidelines about how the amendment process works. It has to also go through like a smaller, faster version of this whole process. But they do have very detailed guidelines about the steps to be taken for for those amendments.
Councilmember Kennedy, thank you for your patience. Go ahead.
So somewhere in the course of all this discussion, did I hear that that you could go back, take care of this omission, bring back a revised package in January for that January meeting, and we'd still meet the deadline? And then we don't need to worry about amendments, modifications, et cetera. We clean up the omission right at the get go and move forward.
That would be January. That would be January 10th, just so we're all on the same page. Paul or City Managers, only go ahead.
But you still potentially would get additional information after that date. After in March, when we find out or February, and we found the total costs for all the pathway improvements or whatever that were calculated based upon that SEMCOG grant that we're receiving. So it doesn't necessarily change the structure of this document. It's still, it'll still have the pathways on there. It's just more up to date numbers. Just like a year from now, the construction costs may even go increase even more. Something that we had limited at 50,000 might be $75,000, you know, within within a future year. And just as if tonight, if there was public comments that were, you know, made that someone say, hey, I think you're missing this. And hey, I think that everybody concurs to it. And then we adopt the plan with those particular changes to it. I I just want to make sure that we do continue to move forward with this. If council chooses not to adopt tonight's resolution, we can bring it back. But I think we're going to be constantly adding things to this. As long as we have the general statements regarding the maintenance of the pathways, and we have all the listed pathways on there, I think we are covered in what we're looking at, what we're looking at doing. That was that was a minor omission that we we apologize. We should have found that.
It's a huge value amount, though.
Absolutely. It was. It was just our fault. We did. We did not see that. That is, you know, that that's something that's on there, and the numbers need to be added in there, reflecting in the guesstimate regarding the maintenance of that of those that section.
Councilmember Kittle, go ahead.
I was actually just, I was curious what Hannah was going to interject there earlier.
Oh, I was just going to say about the amendment process, just that there are those very detailed guidelines.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you talking about like a public hearing and stuff associated with those?
Yeah, I have to go back and look exactly. I haven't looked at them in detail just because, you know, we're still going through the process of the original plan. But I have seen in the same guideline document, there are specific steps laid out to be acceptable by the DNR for an amendment.
Councilmember Kittle.
So are we going back in? Are we going to approve this right now? I mean, do you want to just get this out of the way? We might as well move forward. As much as I I don't like the idea of us leaving that two miles worth of path sitting on the side. Nonetheless, we can attend to this. And down the road, I'm sure that has has been talked about, we're going to find other things that we would like to make sure get into this document. So maybe it's just going to be patch for a while. So do you want, do you want me to make the motion that we approve this thing? Doesn't that make sense?
I think that you would make the motion to approve it based upon the additional comments that were made tonight, that the planner will add the items regarding the additional sections of pathway with those particular cost numbers actually in there. So you are not admitting this from the plan. We can't apply, we will be able to apply for grants then because it isn't going to be included with our plan. But that was brought up at the meeting, and that would be the change that we would make to ensure it's, you know, it is, it is in total.
Yeah, okay.
And that that's where the, that's where the grant comes in for the path analysis. So we have an accurate figure as far as the as far as the path system within the city. So.
Councilmember Kittle, if you're going to use the suggested motion, there's also a number on here that is not filled in. It's just number blank. I don't know what that is.
Oh, I see the resolution number.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody know that?
Yes.
It would be the city clerk. I believe Lisa has that number. She'd be able to tell us.
I'd like to know that number.
I'm sorry, which number am I looking for?
The resolution number.
Let me find it here. I'm sorry.
Just because we have to reference it, that's all.
I usually write them in the next day, so I'm sorry. That's going to be zero, three, two, one.
I'd like to make the motion that that at, well, okay, should I just read that at the regular meeting, the whole spiel? Someone say something.
You can just read the section, read the motion by so and so, certified by, approve the resolution. Lisa's just mentioned zero, three, 21 as attached with within the document or discussed tonight with the amendments that were discussed at the meeting.
Yeah, okay. I make a motion that we approve resolution number zero, three, two, one as described in the document with the additional information that was discussed during this hearing.
A second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Hanson. Is there any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Dil?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you all for your time tonight. I know that was like pulling teeth, but I'm thankful that you all were here for that. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll move on to new business number two this evening, opioid opt-in.
After several years of negotiation, two nationwide settlements have been reached against the three large pharmaceutical distributors, as well as Janssen Pharmaceuticals, its parent company Johnson and Johnson. The settlements require the distributors to pay up to $21 billion over 18 years. And for Janssen to pay up to $5 billion over nine years for a total of $26 billion. Of the settlement amount approximately $22.7 billion is earmarked for participating states and state subdivisions to remediate abate the impacts of the opioid crisis. City of South Line is eligible to participate in the settlement. The settlement with distributors indicates the city of South Line is eligible to receive 0.0259% of the 15% allocation, which is approximately $31,000 that the state will receive to distribute to participating subdivisions. The allocations percentages may be modified. The city of Michigan enters into a state-specific agreement with the settling parties. We've attached a resolution approving opted into the nation national opioid litigation settlement. There's also a letter dated December 2, 2021 from city attorney outlining the settlement process. Possible courses of action tonight are approve or not approve the resolution, opting into the national opioid litigation settlement. Myself or city attorney Hamami is here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Councilmember Dil?
We'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution opting into the national opioid litigation settlement.
A second.
A motion by Councilmember Dil, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion this evening? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dil?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. New business number three tonight is our agenda amendment on the RCA building.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Nate and I had conversations this morning with Dana Schweigler, the owner of the former RCA building. We've done an inspection on the building. You reviewed the status of the work at 135 East Lake Street. Last June, the city council adopted the resolution and agreement approving the abatement for 135 East Lake Street. The owner of the property has discussed with us because his original request did state that they are supposed to be completed by December 31. And if it's not completed by December 31, he doesn't feel like that perhaps everything will be completed. So he has requested tonight that we review and possibly give an extension to the tax abatement. I made a recommendation that city council make a motion to extend it until June 30, 2022, just in case he runs into any other unforeseen issues that might affect the project completion. We're just extending it. If he finishes it within 30 days or 60 days after, this will just prevent us, if we only did it for 60 days, to have to come back again if it was longer than that. And make through, make him jump through unnecessary hoops to complete the project. He, I've attached information from the owner of the project that they show the the amount of money that he has invested within this. He is, I believe, in the, as an attendee on council, and Lisa can bring him to be a participant. If you have any questions of him, I have provided you information regarding the substantial investment that he's made, which is actually more than what was originally proposed. As city council originally approved the agreement as well as the resolution. There were several statements made within the minutes last May as well as June when the final approval. The council was not necessarily holding anybody to any drop dead guideline or drop dead date. As long as the individual is making substantial progress and then following through with all the other requirements of the of the abatement. Dan's here to answer the questions that you may have. Nate and I are also here. But we are looking for hopeful that based upon his request that we would be moving forward with the extension of the abatement. So it is making an amendment to the original abate.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to extend the target completion date for the abatement from December 31, 2021 to June 30, 2022 for the property at 135 East Lake Street owned by Dan Schweigler. Does that cover everything we need on that attorney, Amami?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll support.
Everybody will.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtswell? Dil?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Pellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to the budget this evening. Does anyone have anything on the budget? Okay, we'll move on to our second public comment this evening. Please remember to state your name and address and maintain our two-minute time limit. City Clerk Deaton, do we have anyone in line for public comment this evening?
Nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, we will close our second public comment and move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I thank Dana Schweigler, owner of 135 East Lake Street, for sitting through our riveting conversation, saving regarding Parks and Rec and opioid settlement and everything else that had to do with the downtown. I knew he was in there, the waiter for almost two hours tonight, but he did want to make sure that did get approved, and he is obviously moving forward with that progress on that on that on that project. An upcoming meeting, city council, we're going to be discussing the planned work over our shared administrative building with the schools. We'll be outlining the cost. The school had gone off for bid on a certain number of improvements on on the buildings. Pontiac Trail Road Paving, I gave you information regarding that. Several weeks ago, we applied for a federal grant through the Huron Valley Federal Aid Committee, and we found out that this past week that the application was successful. And we're slated to receive just over $2 million for this project as part of the federal aid program. Our matching portion will be approximately $400,000. The way this federal program works is that you're applying for the grants, and the grants are several years down the down the road. So this is actually part of the fiscal year 2026 program. And this would coincide also with some of the investigative work that we're doing right now in the storm sewer improvements that need to be done along Pontiac Trail, this project for the road and the storm sewer, and wherever else we have to do, and whether it's additional street skate improvements would all be looked at as potentially being one large project within town. And I wanted to update, and I did mention within the report, this year alone, that we've procured grant funding of almost two and a half million dollars for the city, and that does not include the 1.1 million that there were slated to receive for the American Rescue Plan funds. Reminder also for city council to provide the list of of goals and objectives for the 2020 22, 23 budget. Also, on another item regarding roads, I did receive additional information from the county regarding the Dixboro Road Paving plan. This project is several years out, projected to almost be maybe 20, 20, 30. It's a approximately $5 million project. We would be aligned to pay approximately 20%, which is about similar to what it was, 20%, not the million dollars for the Dixboro Road Paving that was done between eight and nine miles. So this would be for the section between nine and 10 mile. And we'd have further discussion within the future, but it's us providing preliminary commitment and put on the list for potential Oakland County gravel road improvements that will be done within the future throughout the county. That's all I have. If you happen to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Anyone have anything for City Managers, Ellen, tonight? Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Congratulations on the $2 million, Paul. That's great news. Maybe we get some more earlier, too.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. That was just a long timeout, but that's how long you have to apply for these funds and in federal, then they earmark those dollars.
Good job.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. If we don't have anything else, we're going to move on to council comments. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, if we don't have anything else, we're going to move on to council comments. Councilmember Kurtzwell, why don't you lead us off? It seems like you've been having some technical issues, so let's get you in and before we lose you. Councilmember Kurtzwell, can you hear me? Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Yeah, I'm having a lot of problems tonight. I'm gonna make it real quick, Merry Christmas to everybody, it's just a great group that we have here on City Council. I'm really looking forward to 2022. And I think one of the things about Christmas is that for some individuals, Christmas won't be the same due to some recent events. So let's remember them in our, in our prayers and in our thoughts. And remember that Christmas isn't about what's under the tree, it's about what you gave to put under somebody else's tree. So it's really the season of giving, so take care everyone, I will see you in January in 2022, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell, Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, tonight I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, a joyous Kwanzaa, or in the words of Jerry Stiller from the Seinfeld Show, and I quote, "A happy Festivus for the rest of us," so happy holidays and have a happy new year.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things, I just wanted to say, I'm really happy to see the businesses downtown full of holiday shoppers and hoping that everybody considers shopping local as they're making their last week's purchases. I know I have a lot of local present, local presents under the tree, and I hope everybody else does as well. I also wanted to give a little shout out to Dana Johnson. Just being able to pull off the parade with such a short notice on the, on all the different changes that she had to roll with. I was a little nervous about how that might go, but it was wonderful, and, and I just wanted to thank her for, her and Nate for their efforts with that. I also want to just offer some support and encouragement to our South Line school teachers and our other support staff, who have to go to work every day and not only keep it together for themselves, but to keep the kids safe and calm in their classrooms, with everything they've had to do to handle COVID. Everything has thrown, thrown at them, and now having to deal with this shooting that happened so close to, to home. Also false reports and scares that are happening daily. It, it just really worries me for the mental health, we talked a lot about the mental health of our police, but also the mental health of the, of the school staff. I just want to say that I'm personally sorry that our teachers, administrative, administrator, support staff, students and parents, students have to have this as their reality every day. And I just think that we need to remember that when we're dealing with them, and give them the grace that they need to, to just get by every day. Happy holidays to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill, Councilmember Kibble?
I just wanted to congratulate everybody that was involved with the holiday spectacular, that was, uh, we caught a real break, had weather that was conducive to having an event like that. It was, I saw an awful lot of shoppers during the course of the day, and when the parade came on, the, the downtown was very, very full. People were pretty jubilant, and it was unfortunate that the high schoolers weren't able to participate in that, but nonetheless, I don't think anybody was terribly concerned that, that they felt shortchanged, saying they had a nice ride on the, the rig. Everybody ended up seeming to move down to the village, which is kind of one of the things that had been spoken to earlier that I have a little bit of concerns with, as much as I, I applaud the idea of trying to keep people downtown after the event. I think we need to, to make sure that we don't negate some of the people that might end up going to the village for that whole aspect of the entertainment. So we're gonna have to put our thinking caps on and trying to find a solve for that, I think. Outside of that, happy, 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 happy holidays. It's, um, it's been a very weird year, and getting to this, this point has been kind of a struggle for some. So I, I hope everybody has a terrific holiday and see you guys back in January, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kibble, Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a happy new year. I'm really looking forward to seeing everyone in person next January. I, most recently, I was able to be at the ribbon cutting for the Twisted Cork Winery. It was so great to see so many of our city business leaders, as well as several folks from council and from our city staff there to welcome this business at their ribbon cutting, and it was just great to be a part of that event. And I'm very hopeful and very excited to be a part of this Italian restaurant that will be opening hopefully this summer. So thank you to the rest of council for extending that so that they can get it finished to their specifications and bring it to our city, so Happy New Year, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Moser?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to say it was really fun volunteering for the holiday spectacular. I think everybody needed it after the week we had with the Oxford incident. And thank you to Dana Johnston, you did a heck of a job with that parade. It just, it just, everything just came together at the end, that was great. So with that, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Moser, um, we've been through a rough one here tonight, guys, but I just got a couple of things that I really wanted to share. So March of 2020, you know, it hit the fan. And this team and our previous team and the staff over at City Hall was able to come together and navigate Zoom meetings since then. And so I just want to thank everybody that's, that's been a part of that team and trying to get through this. City Clerk Deaton has been incredible, you know, all of us, you know, except for the, the over-under of 13 or 14 and a half on the, you're muted, Councilmember. We've come a long way, so I just want to thank everyone for that, that was a team effort, it's been a team effort since this started. But I, I too am looking forward to getting back to in-person meetings. As Councilmember Kibble could probably tell you, navigating these meetings from the mayor's seat with everyone's screen, it, I can get lost over here. And so I thank everyone for their patience, I think we've got it down pretty good now. So, you know, hopefully, you know, we won't have to ever go back to this, but, you know, I just wanted to thank everyone for all of their efforts in that. Secondly, man, I hate missing city events, I, it doesn't happen often. I, you know, I'm normally better about putting family things in the calendar. I did not put my cousin's wedding in the calendar and had a, I was double booked for the Christmas spectacular. And so I also want to thank everyone that helped pick up, you know, my absence, the show must go on whether I'm here or not, and it sounds like it was great. And so I would wanted to thank everyone from Dana Johnson to our first responders and, and everyone involved, our friends at the Historical Society. That's a great event, and I definitely was thinking about all of you while I was hobnobbing at the Shinola Detroit. So, and then I do have some personal news, many of you, I have probably already had the opportunity to share this with you. We've had some, some things change, I am going to be taking on a new job. I thought this new job was going to be starting in January of 2022. After our visit to the doctor's office today, my new position of being a dad will be starting the week of, between Christmas and New Years. So we do not know the gender of the baby, we've just been calling it pancake, so it's gonna be a surprise for all of us. And Baby Pelchat will hope, you know, hopefully be here to join us for the new year, so. If, if I seem to be a little bit absent or a little bit late on getting back to anyone on some emails, forgive me because I'm, I'm a rookie dad, so we're gonna, we're gonna be trying to do the best we can in juggling all that. So I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season, and I look forward to seeing you all in the new year. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn?
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Good night, everyone.
Just a quick aside.
I was gonna say, go ahead.
Uh, Dan Schweigler wanted to thank everybody for the approval there, so I just thought I'd pass that along.